Good evening, everyone. My name is Pat Dowell. I'm the Alderman of the 3rd Ward and I want to welcome you to the 3rd Ward Town Hall meeting. Tonight, we have 3 agenda items. And I want to thank everyone who sent questions in for our various projects. We will show those questions at the end of each presentation. So the entire members who are here, all of the participants that are here, we'll see what questions were asked. Some of those questions may be answered during the presentation. I've shared those questions with the, each of the applicants, so they know those questions ahead of time. Also, if you have other questions, please utilize the Q and A and put your question in the Q and A section. And as time permits, we will get to those as well. So we'll get started right away. The first item on our agenda tonight is 1225 South Indiana. And I will call on Nick Fatikas, who is the attorney for the applicant, or the client, his client, the developer. And Nick, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Alderman. Can you hear me and see me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So again, my name is Nick Fatikas and I'm one of the attorneys at Jim Banks's office, working with brief properties on the proposed development of the vacant property 1225 South Indiana. As a little bit of background on the zoning, the subject property is already part of Master Plan Development number 499. The original plan development actually dates back to about 2005. This parcel was left to be developed and again Greg is in the process of purchasing the property with the intent of developing it with a new 5-story, 100-unit residential building. We've worked with our contact at the Department of Planning and Development on a number of the design elements and so that we're not redundant and in the interest of the time, I'll turn the floor over to our project architect, Bill Hornoff, to take everybody through the slide deck for the proposed residential building.
Thank you, Nick. I hope everyone can hear me. Do I have permission to share my screen?
Yes, you should. If you have any issues, I can share.
Thank you. Can we all see that? So as Nick had mentioned, this building occupies Plan Development 499. Within the Plan Development, or I should say, the Plan Development dictates the footprint of the building. It tells us how tall the building can be, how much area the building will have, how many dwelling units, how much parking. An interesting thing in this Plan Development had a couple other requirements that we've met. And that is with the height itself, there was a height requirement for the building that it needed to be at minimum 50 feet along the Indiana Parkway Street, but no more than 70 feet itself. The other interesting aspect of the lot, and I'll go to this next slide, I hope, is the parcels here, this is the part of our parcel itself, 2A and 2A1. The difference with 2A1 is that it is prescribed by the PD as an open park space. And so our building acknowledges that and provides a park on the corner of 13th and Indiana Parkway. Existing site, which many of you are familiar with, I'm sure. So for the building itself, it's a 5-story building. As I said, its height is 60 feet, so it's right between those 2 requirements of the 50 and the 70-foot max height. It has 100 apartments. It's entry is off of Indiana Parkway. It has, again, you can sort of see the park here at the corner of 13th and Indiana. It has, the other thing that was sort of interesting about the Plan Development is that there's a requirement that the parking occupy the lower level of this site. So all of our parking is below the park and carries underneath this wing. The PD required us to provide a minimum of 55 parking spaces. In our case, we're providing 87, so we're providing additional parking spaces. Again, all of that is below grade. So here's that lower level showing the parking spaces. For the most part, the functions at this level are primarily parking. Entrance to the garage is off of 13th. This was a request by the Alderman's office themselves that they were concerned about modifying the parking arrangement that currently exists on Prairie. And we initially had our parking off of this point of the building and she asked that we relocate the parking off of 13th. So this is entry and exit out of the parking garage. The building itself, you can see sort of jogs as a Z sort of shape of, you know, wrapping around the open space of the park at the corner. The other interesting thing about this building in particular is that, as many of you know the neighborhood, it's a combination of townhomes, but also apartment condo blocks. And so our building looks to hearing some of each of those aspects. In that, the first level, I should say, the first 2 levels are townhomes. So they all have their own entrances off of either Indiana Parkway or in the park. And there, as I said, 2 stories tall. They're typically 3-bedroom apartments, so they're fairly large in scale. But the idea is, as many of you know, that just to the south of us is a townhouse development. So the idea was to sort of be in scale and fit the neighborhood in that respect. The upper level of that 2nd floor, and then floors 3, 4, and 5 are all identical with a mix of 1-bedroom, 2-bedroom, 3-bedroom, and 4-bedroom apartments. The apartments here are fairly large in size for a building of this scale, and I'll go through that shortly. There is rooftop access. You can sort of see the equipment. You'll see in our roof plan, we've made a concerted effort to cover the equipment. Many of you may be looking down onto our building, so understanding that in a way, we have a fifth facade here that we use a canopy to cover all that dumb stuff like air conditioning equipment. So as I said, there are 100 apartments in the building. There are 61 bedrooms, 25 3-bedroom apartments, so almost a quarter of the building are 3-bedroom apartments. There are a couple 4-bedrooms, and then the balance are 2-bedroom apartments. The other aspect of this that we work closely with the Department of Planning is that our Parkway, our sidewalk, match the existing setbacks that are established, one in the PD, but also by the existing building. So the next few slides really just show how our building sets back. In fact, our building sits back 13 feet 3 inches off of the property line. The property line is that red line right there, so our building is set back off of the sidewalk. 13-3, as I said. And you can kind of see the sections here. And so this was an analysis we did with Department of Planning, just demonstrating that our sidewalk matched the existing sidewalk to the south specifically. For the building itself and the materials, the building is primarily a masonry building. Brick on the upper levels, cast stone at the first 2 levels. Again, sort of identifying those townhome components of the building, separating it from the 1-story bedroom apartments above. The brick itself is going to be, it's called winter blend. It's a mix of 3 different sort of light-colored brick. The cast stone is going to be a limestone-like color. There'll be 2 metal accents, a copper metal accent, and then a standing seam metal accent, just to offer some variety to the building. Some of the soffits in the entry canopies will be done in wood. Just some of the elevations, you can sort of see that, again, the building is a 5-story building with the rooftop access, building section here. And then this building section, I think, is a little bit more interesting. You can kind of, so this is a section looking north on the property. This is Prairie here. You can sort of see how the garage works underneath the park aspect, and then the townhomes at the first 2 levels, and then the apartments above. And we are, as I had mentioned before, 61 feet above grade here, to the top of the roof. And then just some views of the building itself. This is looking towards the park, Indiana Parkway, of course. The building entrance is off the corner. There's some amenity space right on the corner, and then the residential entrance is here. The other request that the Alderman's office had asked for is a lay-by lane, a lane where deliveries can be made, rideshare pickups, things like that. So that's this area right here. Now, this is under review and CDOT. This hasn't been finalized, but so we're pursuing that. Here's a better view of the residential entrance. All of the, as I had mentioned before, all the townhomes have their own entrances. So again, sort of mimicking the building just to the south of us. And then the park itself, we've had a landscape designer lay out the plantings. There'll be trees and planters wrapping around the perimeter, and then the park itself is just meant to play, have picnics, things like that, and it's open to the public. The other request that the Alderman's office had asked is that the park be able to be secured at the end of the night. So the gates will be locked at a given time. The back of the building, this is the street just to the north of our property. This is the existing ramp down to the lower-level parking garage of the adjacent buildings. That's unchanged. The planner there is unchanged. Our lot starts right back here. This would be a dog run for the tenants in the building on the backside of the building, which would be accessed from a rear entrance of the building itself. And again, a detailed view of the sidewalk along Indiana Parkway, looking towards the residential entrance and the amenity space, and then the gate leading into the park. And a couple more views. The one on the left is the view looking south down Indiana Parkway, and then at the corner of 13th and Indiana, looking towards the park. Some traffic flow and pedestrian flow plans where, a couple of things I didn't mention, as I said, the parking entrance is off of 13th, in and out is here. We are providing an interior loading space. The loading space itself is fairly ample, so it will accommodate full-size trucks. So all of the loading will be within the building itself, and it does make use of the existing space here, and then that's the ramp down to the existing parking garage. The rest of it is unchanged. And then, you know, we're adding the park, so there'll be entrances to the park at the corner, at all 3 corners of the park. The, I didn't mention this before, but we've met all of the requirements. We're not asking for anything here. We're not asking for more units, less parking spaces, taller building, or the building footprint itself is what the Department of Planning has requested. And then the makeup of the apartments themselves. As I had mentioned, there's 100 apartments, 61 bedrooms, 13 2-bedrooms, 25 3s, and 2 4s. So with that, and then just the landscape plan, one thing I've noted is that some of the Parkway trees were surveyed, and some of them are at a point where they'll be replaced. So our landscape designer has gone through and identified which trees need to be replaced, has worked with CDOT on that, and so that's being specified. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll leave my screen sharing up in case I have to come back to the plans.
Thank you, Mr. Hornoff. I might ask if you could stop sharing, so we could have the questions we received posted here. Brian, are you able to do that? Okay, so I also want to introduce Emily Thrun from the Department of Planning and Development. Emily, do you have any comments that you want to make before we go through these questions?
Sure. I think Bill covered a lot of the PD restrictions when he introduced the presentation. So yes, it is part of PD 499, specifically within Parcels 2A and 2A-1. In the master plan, 2A-1 is restricted development, so it was intended as being an open space for this plan development. The restrictions specifically for 2A include that the development would be a minimum of 50 height along this portion of Indiana, just as Bill mentioned earlier. And then it also has a parking requirement of .55 parking spaces per unit, which they're meeting. If they're actually exceeding in this plan development, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that may come up when it comes to any zoning or plan development-related questions.
Okay, so we're going to go through these questions. Nick, can you take it away?
Sure.
And then I want to add to them when I see something in the Q and A that relates to that particular question.
Okay, so I think the first question, please describe the zoning for the lot. I think we did that. The height restrictions, again, 50-foot minimum, 70-foot maximum. The floor area ratio, Bill, did you speak to the floor area ratio?
I didn't. It's usually an arcane thing, but you know, in this case, there's actually, Emily might know the actual ratio, but there's a requirement here for 109,000 square foot building, no more. And well, we're at 109,000 square feet.
So we're within the allowance for the floor area?
Yes.
It's 3.38 for this specific parcel.
Okay. Density again is 100 residential units, and open space is being met by that area, the 2A area, which is the corner, again, the private park that's being proposed. We did also talk about the height with respect to
Question on the height, Nick, which is that there's, I guess, some sort of view corridor easement that you can't go above 70 feet.
Correct.
And a person is asking that the garage or the floor is actually 20 feet above datum. I don't know what D-A-T-U-M is.
So I can clarify.
Oh, you are, in his mind, above the 70 feet max, well, the 61 feet that you have here is above what would be allowed.
No, we actually, our parking is all below grade, as I mentioned. So from grade itself, which is 0, we are 61 feet above grade. So that means our building, the top of our roof is no higher than 61 feet. That said, we do have penthouse enclosure stairs, elevator enclosures that go up to 70 feet. But those are incidental. That's not the mass of the building.
Okay. I think this, go ahead, Nick. I think the second question has been answered.
Okay, thank you. I can answer the next question. The proposed residential development, this is a rental project. Greg, who's on the call with us, would maintain ownership and rent the units on the open market. Greg, can you confirm status of the purchase? Have you completed the purchase, or are we still contract?
No, purchase has been completed.
Okay, so you do now own the property for development?
Yes, that's right.
And the plans, no formal filings have occurred. What we've been instructed to do and what we've tried to do is work with Department of Planning because of the unique restrictions and requirements for development of these 2 adjoining lots to develop a plan that we thought met all of those standards, and at this point, we believe we do. So from a zoning side, Emily, please correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is we have the zoning entitlements in place. However, the property is located within the boundaries of the Lakefront Protection Ordinance, and therefore, an application for Lakefront Protection Approval to the Chicago Plan Commission would still be required. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's correct. This is also a site plan approval for the PD.
And those 2 applications are run concurrent through DPD and through Plan Commission, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Bill did speak to the rooftop. Bill, I don't know if you have any follow-up regarding rooftop features, but it's our understanding that the rooftop design does meet DPD standards for the building?
Well, it will. We are also going to provide a sustainable billing, which as part of that typically we'd provide green roof. So while we haven't embarked on that part of the design yet, we anticipate that there will be green roof. You saw that, as I had mentioned before, additionally, we have sort of a screen that covers the mechanical equipment. So we're in the works on the rooftop landscape just yet.
The next question is about staging during construction. And it's my understanding, and Bill, please again, correct me if I'm wrong, that given the fact that we're not actually developing a building area on the, what will become the private park, for the purposes of staging, that actually gives us a great opportunity to use that flat land off-street privately owned for staging. Once the building is developed and, you know, fully constructed, we can then begin the process of delivering the park consistent with the plan presented to DPD. Is that right?
Yeah, I'm sure that the park will become the staging area for the site, and then as the construction sort of reaches the end, the park will get developed on the way out. So it's actually a really nice feature for both logistics for the building construction, but also the neighborhood.
I believe that the next question, I'm sorry.
No, Nick, the next question is really a question for me, which is, I mean, you could talk about any kind of traffic study that you've done, but the, and I definitely concur that that soccer match was horrible around there. So, you know, the difference between that and Soldier Field games is that people who come to Soldier Field usually know what they're doing. They're repeat customers. People that went to the soccer match came from all over. Really, some people just came down to hang out and didn't go to the game. So the larger traffic issues, I'm planning to have CDOT and OEMC at a subsequent meeting, so I don't expect you to be able to answer this particular question.
Okay, thank you. With respect to data information regarding the real estate market, I really would have to defer to Greg. But before I do so, I would say that the property was, as part of the master plan development, always intended to have residential density. Again, the parameters were set, you know, previously, and we're trying to fit our building into that mold, so to speak. And Greg, if you had anything else to add regarding market analysis?
I would say we did not conduct a market analysis, but we feel the units, the unit mix that we're offering here, the larger units is needed in this area. There's not many large units available to rent at this time, and we think that's something that's well-needed in this area. And we also, we're not a fully amenitized building, so we believe we can offer units at a little less than market, which I think would be good for the community.
Regarding a survey to residents, that may be another Alderman question?
Well, this is not a plan development. I mean, it is a plan development, but it doesn't really have a requirement for a survey. I mean, I usually handle input from my constituents in meetings like this. I know that I have from time to time when there were other proposals for this and this particular site, and it was basically large high-rises. I have taken those projects to the community at small condominium meetings. Greg, if you're interested, we can do that, but given that this is not a high-rise and people did not want a high-rise at this location, I think this meeting and perhaps another, or some others, as we move along, would be appropriate. So no survey has been sent.
And the next question then is whether the developer pulled back from profit-making maximums. And I actually think it actually dovetails into what you had just mentioned, Alderman. Unlike some of the prior developments where amendments to the plan development were proposed for larger buildings, our task from the beginning was to try and fit a building into what the plan development called for for this property, or at least this portion of the property. So we are, again, we're not maxing out the height. We're meeting our height minimum. We're exceeding our onsite parking total, and we're also complying with the density allowance for the property. So again, I think this is an effort to find a project that works based on the parameters set by the existing zoning district.
May I also add that the park itself is a privately funded and privately maintained aspect? So the developer is also developing the park. So you know, that's, I would say, a benefit here.
And with respect to the pedestrian ways, as well as building deliveries, again, I think Bill spoke to that during his presentation of the building. The ownership specifics for the areas, which abut the 1201 underground parking facility, again, I don't want to misconstrue that question. Our parking is completely separate. Again, it was designed to comply with the underground parking requirements for the plan development. I'm not, again, I don't believe, and again, Bill, please correct me if I'm wrong, that our program would interfere with the underground parking that already exists at 1201?
Correct. It will not affect it. As a matter of fact, it's set back quite a bit from the ramp area itself.
Perfect. So Alderman, I think that, oh, there's more.
Nick, this is the second set of questions we received from constituents prior to the meeting, and there's one more after this, I believe, and then we'll go to what's in the Q and A.
Okay. The next question is whether Indiana will remain no parking from 13th to Roosevelt?
That's for me. The answer to there is yes.
The next question is where will the residence park? Again, we have 87 parking spaces to support our 100 residential units within the building in that basement level or that underground parking level. There are no commercial uses proposed. Again, the plan development called for a residential building, so there is no residential, I'm sorry, there is no commercial or retail component proposed with respect to our use. The landscaping, I think, probably ties back into the Parkway improvements and the landscaping buffers. Bill, if you want to add a little bit of color to the landscaping separation or buffers between our building 1201, 1211, and 1235?
Well, the existing planters that, I'm not sure which specifically these are referring to, but the planter just to the north of our building does not change and is not affected, nor is the planter that defines the ramp that has a fence to it from Prairie. So those planters are unchanged and is not part of our landscape proposal.
And then as part of our landscape proposal along Indiana, the Indiana Street side of our property, are there any Parkway tree landscape improvements on that side of the lot?
Yes, as I had mentioned, the landscape designer had gone through and done a survey of the existing trees. He is working with CDOT on the removal of some of the trees that are on their way out, and they're going to be replaced with new. So the, in the end, the landscape design of the Parkway will look very similar to what's there now.
And then lastly, we did, on this sheet, we did speak to the exterior building materials, both again at the lower levels and then the multi-unit above.
Correct. It's largely a masonry building. That is brick and, as I said, cast stone.
Brian, is that the rest of, that's all the 1225 questions we received?
Yes, it is, Chairman.
Okay, so a couple of, we'll just start going through the chat. I'll tell you, cost of units, what's the rental costs for the one through four-bedroom units? The timeline for development, any affordability, any affordable units in the hundred units? Dimension of the park. Now give me a chance to look at some other questions. You take those on, Nick.
Okay, actually Greg, if you could answer the questions regarding that you're anticipating?
Yeah, the one-bedroom apartments, roughly seven hundred square feet average will be between, rough range between two thousand and twenty-five hundred a month. Two bedrooms will a- average around twelve hundred square feet will average between thirty-five hundred and four thousand a month. Three bedrooms of roughly fifteen hundred square feet will be four thousand to five thousand dollars a month. And then four bedrooms will be about twenty-two hundred square feet. And they'll be between five hundred, fifty-five hundred and six thousand dollars a month.
Are any of the units affordable? Do you have an affordability requirement here? Emily, that's probably your question.
Yeah, so this is, when this PD passed, there was no affordability requirement. So since they are not amending the PD, they have no ARO obligation for this project.
Construction schedule, timeline for development?
Approximately fourteen to sixteen months construction time.
And we would, and just to, again, give a little bit more color to that, because we have not yet filed any formal applications, we're probably somewhere between ninety and a hundred and twenty days out from any type of formal zoning review, final review and approvals. So we're fourteen months after three or four months of entitlement work prior to permitting.
Dimensions of the park?
And, you know, you've stumped me. It's been a while since I looked at this. Emily probably knows this better. I think it's eighty, roughly eighty-two, eighty-seven by a hundred and thirty-seven, I think. Does that sound right, Emily?
The parcel itself, is it just over twelve thou- twelve thousand square feet?
I think you've answered this. Will the air conditioning rooftop equipment extend above the sixty feet or sixty-one feet?
Yes, the equipment will sit on top of the roof. And is covered.
And how tall is that?
The condensers themselves are typically thirty inches to thirty-six inches tall.
And again, on that note, Alderman, we are going to be working with DPD to make sure that the green roof, as well as any type of screening, is incorporated so that those condensers aren't just plainly the neighboring buildings who are a little bit taller than ours.
Are any of the units accessible for the disabled?
Absolutely. Twenty percent of the units will, will meet the ADA requirements.
Can you please speak to your plans for security and cameras? Showing street and, and rear area outside of the building? Do you have plans for security and cameras showing street and rear area outside of the building?
There most certainly will be a security system. We have not gotten to the point where we've mapped out the, the camera locations on the building, but there most certainly will be.
Okay, lighting? Are you adding lighting along 13th Street?
There is no lighting beyond our site. However, we are providing lighting for the park, of course, and then lighting on the building itself for both the entry courtyards, the residential entrance and around the building, both, both decorative and security lighting.
I'm just scanning these things. Okay, how tall is this new building in relation to the terrace on the fifth floor of 1201 South Prairie? Would the new building be as tall as it or taller?
Well, I can't speak to the height of the 1201 building. But as was noted, it's the fifth floor and our building is five stories. So the, I suspect, my guess, and I'm, I'm not sure of this because I don't know the height, that the only thing above would be our, the two exit stair penthouse enclosures and the elevator enclosure. Again, our top of our roof is at sixty-one feet above grade.
All right. Bill, there's a question about if any portion of the building in front of 1235 Prairie will exceed seventy feet above this Chicago city datum?
No, no, they would have taken my head off had we proposed a building seventy feet taller. So again, we're sixty-one feet.
I, I think this is, the, all these questions are coming from the same person. So I think he just wants to be completely secure
Understood.
in what you're proposing here. Another question is that the staging area for the construction of the parking garage, since parking will be under the proposed part?
Yes, so I, I think as Nick had mentioned, the park, we suspect that the park will be utilized for coming and going of equipment, storage of construction-related elements. So the park will be very useful through the course of construction. We anticipate that that would be the case.
To the constituent who asked if any of the plans that we're hearing tonight being presented, proposed or approved, these are all proposed projects. Each of them have their own, a different type of approval process for, you know, depending on, you know, whether they're getting any kind of entitlements from the city required to go through Plan Commission, if any of it's building, being built on city-owned land. So at this point this evening, all of these are proposals. Emily, I think this is a question was for you. It could be for CDOT, I'm not sure. I, I always get questions regarding, you know, why the city doesn't put in lights on 13th Street? Or, you know, that kind of thing. But 13th and Prairie are private roads with maintenance responsibilities which fall on 1235, 1211, and 1201. The development we're discussing today depends on these roads. What responsibility will this development have in the maintenance of the roads?
That's a question I'll check in with CDOT, but I, I assume it's the responsibility of the developer since they are privately owned roads. But I'll confirm and get back to you, Alderman.
Okay, a lot of these questions are, how will construction vehicles access the site? Bill?
We're only doing zoning yet, so you know, that's a
Yeah, it's, it's, it's too hard to say, right? We haven't really planned, planned on construction quite yet.
I think that as we, I, I suspect that the parkway along 13th is being re-redone. And so that probably offers access to the, the park itself, the, the park prior to it being developed for in and out for construction. But again, it, you know, this is a, I think we have to work with the general contractor.
All right, and I think you've made the point that the delivery area is completely separate from the entrance and ramp to the underground parking to two, 1201.
Yeah.
Here's a question I know would come up. How wide will the sidewalk be on Indiana? Will you have a sidewalk on the north side of 13th Street?
I don't believe we have a sidewalk. I believe we, as a, I believe it's landscaped, very similar to as it is now. The sidewalk is, Emily would knows this, I know off the top of her head, five feet plus we're adding a little bit. I don't remember the exact dimension. But suffice to say that it matches the width of the parkway and sidewalk just to the south of our property. Department of Planning was very particular about us matching that identically. So they're the same.
Can you speak to trash collection? Will it be underground or at street level?
So trash will be, there, there is a trash chute through the building. In the loading area, I showed you off the first floor at the loading bay, trash will be collected internally and then removed from the building.
How is this project being financed? It's all private dollars, correct?
Yes, it is.
To the person that asked then to describe the entrance on 13th Street, this is already a fairly narrow street. This is ingress and egress for the parking lot.
Correct.
All right, and then I guess the last question I see here, that, you know, the traffic questions, I'm going to put aside this evening and have CDOT and OEMC come and address some broader questions regarding traffic. Emily, I'd like for you to help me make that happen.
Sure, yeah, I made the CDOT aware of that concern and they've reached out to OEMC in the Park District. So I think I'll circle back with you.
It'll, it'll be concerns, not just related to this building, but general concerns regarding 13th and Indiana. Left and right hand, east and west turns on Roosevelt. 13th Street between Indiana and Michigan, it will also be a concern. Last question, I think, for you, Nick or Greg, is can you speak to your, why you're focusing on renters versus ownership?
Maybe it's a, a question for Greg, but I think the, the initial response was it's trying to or attempting to meet a demand in, in the market. There are a number of condominium buildings nearby. There are a number of owner-occupied townhomes. And this is trying to offer another path for, I, you know, people, the tenants to occupy this, the, the area. We believe there's a need, again, that's probably something Greg can speak to more, more specifically. But the opportunity to offer units that are rental is, it, it doesn't seem as though there's as much in terms of competition with the already occupied, owner-occupied condominiums and townhomes. And Greg, if you want to maybe add to
Would you say that the, our, our unit mix, the larger units are, are something that, that certainly is needed in the area? And, you know, with, with what we're doing with the three and four-bedroom units, we think that's going to serve a, serve a nice purpose down there and create a nice niche, you know, for the rental market. And, you know, we believe there's, there'll be good demand for the larger units.
To the person that asked about federal dollars involved, this is a completely private project, financed privately by private money that the developers bring to the table. There's no city money or federal money in this development. Greg and Nick, I want to thank you, and Emily, thank you so much, and Bill. Thank you so much for being with us this evening. I'd like for you to make your slides available for us, which I believe we already have. Brian, if you can confirm that?
Yep, we have all the presentations ready.
Okay, and for people who would like to receive a copy of what was presented, presented this evening, please send an email to wardzerothree@cityofchicago.org and we will get something to you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. Alderman, you're muted.
The second item on our agenda is, I believe, 5036 South Prairie. And I would call on Kerry Young. Hi there, Kerry. How are you?
Doing good. Thanks for getting us in tonight. Ron's going to take the lead on this. We have, I have my Architec Angel contract on the phone, I mean, on a Zoom. So Ron will take the lead tonight.
And once again, I probably can share my screen to show the plans then. So this project's on the corner of 51st and Prairie. It's a forty-nine unit apartment building. We are showing that this is our, kind of our site plan where we do have parking that comes off the alley. And then we do have retail on the ground floor along 51st Street. So we have approximately four thousand, we have four thousand four hundred and twelve square feet of retail space that's on the ground floor, which is right off of 51st Street. And then we do have our residential entrance will be off of Prairie. And our unit mix is made up of three efficiency studio apartments, fourteen-one bedroom, thirty-one two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom apartment unit. So the ground floor has a little bit of the amenities area, which would be a community space for the, the residence, a fitness area, and limited amenities in that case. And then the upper floors are typical floors where we have combination of the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and the efficiency units. Our exterior of our building is similar type of materials of what we just talked about on the, that previous project, where we do have the cast stone base on the ground floor. And then we do have multi-blend brick that matches a couple of the buildings adjacent to the site. And then along the top of the building and then in the insets where we have our patios for each apartment unit has a metal panel. And what we have here is, this is the view of the corner of 51st and Prairie where we have our entrance into our, our retail commercial space. We providing, we worked with the city planning department on coming up with versions of a, a plan that was already developed in regards to making them more open on the ground floor for that retail space and then our amenities space. And then we do show our entrance here for our residential entrance. And then as part of the architectural element, which Kerry and the development team wanted to have, was more of a curved element on the corner, which has a balcony for that, those units above. And then this would be a view looking south of the building, showing where we do have our community area for the residential kind of offset from the building and then out towards the public walk. And then these are the typical accessible units that we'll have with the studio-type apartment, our two-bedroom and our one-bedroom apartment. And then these are the various options that we have for our two-bedroom units, one-bedroom units, is depending on where they're located within the building. Uh, as we have our ground for a three bedroom unit here, our two bedrooms vary depending on where they're at and the different amenities or spaces such as elevator and trash room. And similarly here, these are um, the different options that we have for these apartment units. I do have, I do have renderings, but there are, I think we did provide those earlier and I would have to exit out the screen to bring those up. And I can do that, which will provide kind of different, more polished views of the, the project. Pull those up real quick.
Ron, did you say how many units are in this?
Yeah, 49 apartments. So this is uh, the rendering of the corner of uh, 51st and Prairie. And this is kind of looking back uh, towards our residential entrances, kind of covered by a tree unfortunately on this rendering.
You can't see your rendering. I always use the uh, floor plan.
Oh, okay. That's interesting. Well, it's showing up on my screen and for whatever reason, so. I'm not sure how to fix that.
Brian, do you have the rendering as part of the PowerPoint sent to us?
I should let me pull it up.
Okay. Then I'll stop sharing my screen. No, you did it for me. Thank you. Yeah, those were the ones I just presented. I didn't know if we got the other ones in there.
Yeah, I'm sorry that those are the only ones I have at this time.
Okay. All right. Well, we had some more polished renderings, but unfortunately through the screen share wasn't able to come through.
You have screen sharing um, authority, right? So.
Yeah, I did. When I pulled them up, I could see them on my screen, but you apparently couldn't see them at all.
Okay.
I should actually have them right here. Hold on one moment.
While we're waiting, um, Mr. Young, if you, oh, there we go.
This would be the Prairie elevation. And this would be the view from the parking lot that was off of the alley. And there is a rear entrance there for the, the residents to access the, the parking lot.
Ron, is that the end of your presentation?
Yeah, for the most part. And I think there was one other rendering, but um, we, we kind of get the gist of it from what I presented earlier.
Okay. So before I go to the questions, can you um, state the addresses that are involved in this development?
Uh, Carrie's probably going to have to answer that one. I don't know the exact addresses.
50 to 5044 South Prairie.
50?
50, 44 South Prairie.
Right, but you're um, requesting city owned land as well. So is that, that's not the city owned parcel?
No, we got, we got three city parcels.
Right. I'm, I'm asking you to give the, the entire nu- number of addresses for the development. So we have the pin numbers, but I don't see an exact address to what those pins are.
Alderman, I, I can answer that.
Thank you, Justin. I introduce Justin Peterson. Justin Peterson is the city planner for the Department of Planning and Development, responsible for this project.
Thank you, Alderman. Um, so the, the addresses are approx- are 5036, uh, which is the northernmost parcel, city owned pin uh, through uh, 50, sorry, just through 5044. Those are the city owned parcels. And then I believe Mr. Young's parcel's 5050.
Okay. Um, before I get into the questions, um, um, either Ron or Carrie, if you could speak to the commercial component?
Yeah, the commercial component right now is nothing has been established what that might be. It uh, at this point, we, we don't know. Um, Carrie, I don't believe you have something, an idea for it.
Well, we had, I had talked it over with the Alderman. And what we was trying to do, we're hopeful that we could get a restaurant. Uh, I have some other uh, peoples that came to me and wanted to propose, but I'm, I'm holding out for a, a sit down restaurant.
And how large is the commercial space? That's what I was getting at, the square.
It's right at 1,000, square feet, 4,000, 4,400.
Yeah.
4,400 square feet. Okay, Brian, can you put the um, questions up that we received and then we'll go to what's in the Q and A?
So how many units? There's, there's 49 units. And um, they vary in size. I can uh,
You got, who was the developer? The, the developers, Carrie, oh yeah.
Yeah, we're going to take them one at a time. Um.
Yeah.
So, yeah. And, and it's 10%.
One at a time.
Yeah, so our um, studio apartments are approximately a little over 600 square feet. For gross square footage, our, our one bedrooms are between 860 to 1,100 square feet. And then our two bedrooms are 1,130 square feet up to um, 1,300. Giving you rough numbers. And then our three bedroom unit is approximately 1,400 square feet. That's gross square footage of the unit.
And can you tell us how many studios, how many one bedrooms?
Yes, Alderman. We have three studio apartments, 14 one bedroom, 31 two bedroom and one three bedroom unit.
Okay, thank you. The second question is who is the developer? Um, Carrie, if you could just give people a little bit of background about your company and uh, where you've worked in the city and elsewhere in Chicago and in the Cook County area?
We've been in business over 35 years. Uh, we started out flipping houses in, in 1982. We've, that's when we started out flipping houses. And we flipped houses, I've said, I want to say over about 500 units. And in 04, we started to go as a developer along with our general contractor. So we built in 04, we formed a development company and we built 16 custom homes in Bellwood. And after we did that, we was awarded 144 uh, lots in Inglewood with affordable lots and 44, 147 lots in Inglewood and 44 uh, two flats. We also uh, built those homes in East uh, West Garfield along with uh, Inglewood. And then the market flipped on us in 08. So when the market flipped us on us in 08, we went with uh, neighborhood stabilization, where we built over, I want to say about seven, eight hundred doors. And then we uh, went and we built 60 homes in Robert Flower. We did 60 in Chicago Height. And we was awarded 100 uh, homes in Fort Hight. So throughout our years, we have, we have been working for this position. So we own that this land here at 51st and Prairie. So after talking with the Alderman, she was um, intercalating with us and, and, and really worked, really worked with us. So we decided to build a mixed use. And that's how we got this building here. So it's, it's, it's four stories. Uh, 49 units. We have the amenities. The amenities are a fitness room, Amazon room, a community room and a wifi room, which they can work remotely. So we did this because a lot of people now work at home, are office, home away from our home. So we have that as a remote room. And then the, the Amazon room, because now it's, there's so much packaging, things are going. So we did that. And this building is so central located, it's only like a half a block from the metro. So we just feel that this was one way we could enhance our career and leave this as a legacy.
Alderman, you're muted.
You know, I just have problems with this mute button on Zoom. How many of the units will be affordable and what kind of affordability will the units offer?
That would be 10% affordable. At 60% AMI.
Okay. And Justin, will you explain to the constituents why he has this 10% requirement?
Sure, uh, Alderman. Uh, so this, the 10% requirement is part of the, the city's ARO ordinance. It's affordability requirements. Those uh, vary depending on uh, the project, project location. Uh, for example, projects receiving TIF funds would uh, be required to hit 20%. In this case, uh, there's no TIF and uh, we're in a low moderate income area. So uh, 10% has been the determination of the Department of Housing.
Okay. And that kicks in because of the land sale, correct?
Correct. Right, there's for the three city parcels.
All right. Now I'm going into the Q and A. Um, a neighbor on that uh, block, uh, Carrie, um, so he says, uh, parking concerns, can you tell me how many parking spaces are required by the zoning ordinance? Um, given the residential and commercial. And, and Justin, if that's more your question, please take it.
Sure. Yeah. Um, so this is a, a considered a transit served location, uh, because as Mr. Young said, we're only about a half a block from the 51st Street Green Line Station. Um, and being within a radius of a quarter mile of that station, uh, parking requirements are uh, they're dramatically reduced uh, by um, I, I believe it, it's down to uh, one space per every two units, uh, rather than uh, for example, one per unit. Um, so that allows uh, for development. It's basically allows for more cost effective uh, development. Uh, so as, as this project, uh, you know, as Mr. Billy uh, shared with us has just a small surface lot in the rear uh, of the building off the street.
Okay, thank you. And to the, the person who sent me this, uh, yes, um, there are a lot of undeveloped lots on Prairie. And that does mean that with more development comes more congestion. It's just inevitable. We would monitor the uh, level of parking concerns that people have in this, in this area right now. Uh, it doesn't seem that this would uh, impact greatly um, the existing area. Um, we do know that uh, having a commercial unit here will definitely increase the consumer activity and the commercial activity on 51st Street, which is something that our community needs. We need to increase the tax base and increase um, the kinds of services other than residential that we can bring to this community. Um, can you speak to the rent levels?
Yes, good evening. So in reference to the rents, we have three studio apartments, which average about 1050. 14 one bedrooms will average between 1235 to 1950. The 31 two bedrooms will average from 1700 to 2,400. And the three bedroom unit will be 2,300. So basically they will start from average from 1050 up to 2,400.
Okay. Can you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, I am Melissa. I am Carrie, uh, assistant.
Okay, hi Melissa. Can you tell me what price is 60% of AMI?
It's 60% uh, for a two bedroom uh, would be 1,300. And for the one bedroom would be 980.
Okay, thank you. Um, the question of whether these amenities will be open to the entire community?
At this time, no, they wouldn't be. They'd be for just the residents.
Right. I, I knew the answer. I just wanted to also say, um, all right, um, question, there's two questions about uh, uh, the sit down restaurant becomes a tenant of the commercial space. Um, what thought have you given about customer parking? That's been an issue for many proposed restaurants. That's the coolest thing from coming into the community.
Autumn, we was hoping that it'd be off street park because uh, because of the metro, we have limited parking uh, as of now. So um, we hope it'd be off street park.
Okay. Um, that's all the questions I see here for you. Um, well, there's one more here. How much of the proposal is commercial property? I believe I heard 4,400 square feet.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and I know we have a represent representative here from the 51st Street Business Association. Brian, I'm going to ask if you can give a speaking. She's asked to speak. Um, and so she's representing the um, business association. I, I'd like for her to, if you could give Sandra Bivins.
Oh, she has permission to speak.
Ms. Bivins, you can uh, speak if you can make a quick statement.
Sorry, Ms. Bivins, you need to unmute yourself.
Going once, Sandra Bivins. Sandra Bivins twice. Okay, we're going to move on. No, we can't hear you, Sandra. You're muted. Uh, Justin, is there anything that you can speak to regarding where this is in the um, city's approval process? Uh Justin, is there anything that you can speak to regarding where this is in the city's approval process?
For, so this will be going to uh the Community Development Commission next week. And following that plan commission and then uh we are assuming a city council introduction. Probably because there's no city council in August, probably September.
Alrighty, uh Sandra, I'm sorry, uh you are on mute. Uh maybe your board member, uh Mr. Spies, do you want to speak?
Looks like Sandra is unmuted herself.
Okay, well, I have to move on. Um so Mr. Young and uh Mr. Billy and Mr. Peterson, thank you so much for your presentation. Um if you're interested in receiving a copy of this this set of PowerPoints for this proposal, please send an email to wardzerothree@cityofchicago.org. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and our last project tonight is uh at three fifty East Cermak, I think. I have that address wrong. Um but our speaker is Mr. Quarles, the attorney for Ben Quarles, the attorney for uh the applicant, the developer, Mr. Quarles.
Yes. Hello, uh I'm Ben Quarles, I'm attorney at DLA Piper, uh here to speak on of digital real.
You're breaking up. Or is it me?
No, Mr. Quarles, it seems that your um reaction is a little weak. Do you mind trying to turn your video off that might make your audio a little easier?
Uh yes, um is that better?
Slightly, give it a shot.
Okay, yes, so uh I'm an attorney at DLA Piper, representing digital realty. They are the uh applicant for an amendment to Plan Development six seventy-five. Uh approved in uh but the the sun vision two areas.
I'm sorry, Mr. Quarles. Mr. Quarles, your, the quality of your of your um wifi or whatever is not good and we can't really hear you plainly.
Can I just pass it to um Scott, Scott Hensley uh or or Rafarak who can?
Mr. Hensley?
Certainly.
Alderman, uh let me share my screen here, I'll put up the slide deck that uh Mr. Quarles has put together.
Hensley.
As as Ben has outlined, this is a project for digital realty, uh they specialize in data center solutions. And um I'm going to turn this over, I think, to uh Mr. Rak to describe who digital realty is.
Sure, thank you. Um so we are a provider of of data center services to some of the largest companies in the world that provide and support the um global internet infrastructure and and online um economy that 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 uh is prevalent these days.
Mr. Rak, if you can turn on your video if you can.
Uh let me see if I can here, you know, bad spot. Is that good? Thanks. Uh so we are a Fortune five hundred company, we've got um, we've been around since two thousand and four, publicly traded. We are uh support um over three thousand customers. Running the gamut from financial services, um finance, insurance, cloud computing, IT infrastructure. Um we are the fifth largest um real estate investment trust in the in the U- US. Uh we operate on uh six continents, um globally, two hundred and seventy-five data centers. Um in the Chicago market, we've got ten data centers. The most uh important of which being three fifty Cermak right across the street from this um proposed project. This is probably the, one of the most important um data centers in the Midwest, um central United States. Um supports hundreds of companies, um including city services. Um companies such as Zoom, which we're on right now, helps um with uh supporting social media um and other media content type companies, um all um operate out of three fifty Cermak. Um it is probably the most valuable from an internet and connectivity standpoint um in the United States. We are looking to expand off of that um and uh continue to support um the global economy. Companies that are um coming into Chicago, um they do need their internet infrastructure close to them. Um so as they expand in Chicago um with offices and other uses industrial, et cetera. Um they do want to make sure that their data is close by and um thus just, that's why we're here today to try to expand our presence here to support their um support their needs. Scott, did you want to go?
Thank you, Ravel, yeah, sure, I'll advance the slides here. Uh I'll take the opportunity to introduce my business partner, Jeff Miller, who's on this call also. And and uh the two of us will be happy to answer any questions after we run through these slides. These are some contextual shots of the neighborhood. And uh the parcel we're talking about is in the southwest corner of twenty-first and Calumet Avenue, excuse me. Uh this is a view south on Prairie Avenue at the uh Marriott Hotel. And the parcel we're talking about, if you can see my cursor, is off there over into the southeast. Uh and you can almost kind of see the existing three fifty Cermak building here in the background. And so this is the area that we're um we're looking to place this uh data center. Uh this is a, you come down to the corner here and you look east on twenty-first, you're looking down toward three fifty Cermak. On the right side here is a hotel and then uh right where my cursor is, completing the south side of twenty-first Street will be, is where the parcel is located. And then going down twenty-first and looking back to where we just were, you get your first glimpse of the vacant parcel. Uh this is the corner of twenty-first and Calumet and this parcel has been vacant since twenty fourteen. Now, Digital Realty owns this land right now. And to give you a little bit of background, in twenty fourteen, uh PD six seventy-five was approved at this location. And um the applicant is here tonight to request an amendment to this PD. Uh the use is not changing, what we are doing is requesting a reduction in the building height, the building area. And so that results in a downsizing of the FAR from a ten point zero to a seven point zero. In twenty fourteen, when this PD six seventy-five was approved, there was a six-year sunset clause included. And so at the end of six years, this is reverted back to zoning designation DX seven, which allows for an FAR of seven point zero. So um we're here tonight to um to explain how we've modified the building and the project uh enabled in order to request this amendment to the existing PD. Now, a few other shots locally, from the south where McCormick Place Convention Center is located. This happens to be King Drive and you're looking north of Calumet here. Uh this five-story building on the left is a historical landmark building called the ABC Building. And it's owned by MPEA and is tied into the hotel. Uh to the right here is uh Digital's um building three fifty East Cermak, which is currently functioning as a a premier data center. Now moving up Calumet, just to the backside of the ABC Building, you can view west and this is an access drive that the hotel is using to uh to get to their loading dock areas. So this, this will end up being a shared access drive, as you will see in our site plan. It's gonna be utilized by both Digital Realty for this data center and it will continue to provide access for the hotel. And then back up to twenty-first and Prairie, I'm sorry, twenty-first and Calumet. Uh if we look south down toward McCormick Place, you can see the parcel uh in question right here. There's three fifty Cermak on the left and then we have the ABC Building uh beyond. Now, just to put all this in context from an aerial standpoint, this top-left image shows existing conditions today. And just to acquaint everybody with what we're looking at, this yellow area is a site in question. It's about one point four acres right now. Uh three fifty Cermak, this premier data center is located here. The hotel, as you can see, has been built. Uh that was all um just beginning to come together when this was approved in twenty fourteen. But this hotel is now complete. Um the event center, the Wintrust Arena is across Prairie. And here's a view of McCormick Place. So this is the parcel that we're we're looking at. And this image here is an aerial of a model that we've created to describe the architecture of the building. Um and then this model has been placed in this other contextual aerial here, so you can begin to see how this building would fit within the neighborhood. So in general, this building is about five hundred and sixty-nine thousand gross square feet. It's just a bit over two hundred and seventy feet tall. It's got ten and a half stories above grade, uh one lower level, which is really where all the incoming utilities uh approach the site and are collected to serve the building. There are seven floors uh starting on level three, which will be data center suites. And these range up from floor three to nine and uh will provide all the white space uh for Digital's customers. Now, a building of this size is a sizable investment. We're anticipating this to be roughly five hundred million dollar building. And that's just the cost that's gonna be financed by DLR or Digital Realty. Uh it does not account for what their customers will spend on their servers and all the other equipment. It's gonna fill the space on those seven floors of data center. And we anticipate the customers will spend um much more than Digital's investment over the next fifteen years. And as part of this, uh there're gonna be quite a few jobs created. Um after construction is complete, we're anticipating a minimum of thirty full-time employees and union engineers to operate the building. And then, of course, there will be customer employees, janitorial staff and third-party security personnel that will add to this the support of this building. Now initially during construction, when we build the shell building, we're thinking that there's gonna be somewhere between fifty, sixty construction workers working during that first fourteen to sixteen months. And then after the shell is done and they're able to build out the interior space for their customers, that that quantity of construction employees is going to jump to about eighty to a hundred and twenty workers overall. Now, this is a uh a site plan and I'll use this to help you orient uh the parcel, north happens to be up. And so what you have here on the, on the right is Digital's existing building, three fifty Cermak. The project building is shown here in red, that's the footprint of the data center at grade. And then uh twenty-first Street runs along the north side here and Prairie over here. Directly west of this project is uh the hotel, the Marriott Hotel. And south down here is McCormick Place and north is residential. Now, this this lighter red or rose-colored area here is really the ground-level service access road that I mentioned before. Currently, it's being utilized by the hotel and this is really their primary way in and out of their loading docks, which are positioned about here. And that's gonna continue to be the case. Uh this will also serve secure docks for Digital's data center. So there's already a cross-access agreement in place to allow this to be a shared drive and utilized by both of these developments here on site. Now, this is a view of the building from the east. This is as if you were uh looking at it while you're on Calumet. And what I want to show you here is sort of how the building is stacked, so that you can understand uh the structure of of the operations. The first two floors at grade are really office and support areas. Um the glass down in here has been slightly recessed on Calumet and there's an arcade on on twenty-first that will provide uh cover at the entrance, which happens to be on twenty-first and and Calumet, right here on the northeast corner. And then starting on level three, we'll begin with our data center floors, which will rise all the way up to level nine. The tenth floor is where the the chiller plant is that keeps all the fluids and all the cooling uh that's required for this operation. This is an equipment floor, has electrical rooms up in here. And on top of that, on the roof are the cooling towers, which are fully screened by a metal panel screen wall to uh hide them from view. Now, on the south side of the building, we have uh our internal generators are positioned here and they are, they're, they start on the fifth floor. And they're positioned at the back end here um so that they're above the height of the ABC Building, so they can get the appropriate airflow as for optimal performance. They'll be sound attenuated and this is really a a facade of louvers, as is the south side. So there's a proper airflow to keep these um running. And now these generators are only in place in the event of an emergency. Uh just to be sure that this center is continuing to operate, uh should there be any power loss. This is a rendering of the building entrance at twenty-first and Calumet. Here you can see on Calumet a bridge, which is proposed to link the three fifty building to this new data center, provide secure connection between these buildings. These are highly secure buildings and once you're trusted and admitted inside, uh the goal is to be able to move from building to building without having to go through security. Now, I do want to add that in twenty fourteen, when the existing building was torn down, there was a bridge here previously and as part of that demolition, that bridge has been removed. Uh beneath the bridge is a utility tunnel underground and that still remains. But the goal here is for us to just replace the bridge structure with a updated version to tie into the three fifty uh East Cermak building and connect to our new project. These are a few other views, uh the bottom left here, you can see is the uh view up Calumet, the ABC Building in foreground and you can see the bridge over Calumet uh a little farther north. And then this is the the backside of, you get a glimpse of the backside of the building that houses all the generators um on the upper floors. This top view describes the main entrance. Uh we've got vision glass here for two stories. We've articulated um the structure of the building and held the glass back to uh create a more active front along Calumet and Prairie, I'm sorry, on um twenty-first. And have a small canopy area to highlight the front entrance to the building. Now, this entrance location makes a lot of sense from digital's standpoint, because it connects directly across the street to the east to the main entrance for visitors to the three fifty building. We're not providing any parking at this new project. It's not required by zoning. And there happens to be a an existing parking deck on the north side of the three fifty Cermak, which will be utilized as well to support this building. And these other renderings just focus in on the top of the building to give you a sense of what's happening near the top. And the bottom is the same twenty first and Calumet view that you saw previously. That represents the the architectural overview that I wanted to offer to you. You may have some questions about this cross bracing that you see in this rendering. And this is simply the the bracing that's inside the building to structurally, to help support the floors and give give the structure some stability. So with that, I'm I'll open this up to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. Can you just give us a sense of how this building is utilized? You know, what's on a typical day, what's the average daily traffic in this building? Is this going to, you say you don't have parking on site on this site that you're utilizing the parking surface parking at the other building? How many spaces do you have in there now? How are they utilized on a daily basis? Is there capacity there for customers that would be using this new building?
I'm going to jump in here as well, Alderman. I'm Scott's partner and have been involved in this project. To back up, there is the 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 two-story parking deck that exists now. And digital realty also has an agreement with MPEA for parking within their facilities. And so there's access to additional public parking within the McCormick Place facilities. Under the DX seven, there's an option to to not provide parking in this kind of location. And the occupancy, well, I'm going to walk through the floor plans real quickly, but there are the floors house computer equipment. So as was mentioned earlier, the daily occupancy in this building is probably thirty to fifty people maximum. And in general, it's about thirty people, I would think, on any given day, once the building is constructed and fully operational. So Rafal may be able to speak more accurately to what would the existing three fifty Cermak. But we went through this discussion with digital realty, and they were confident that between the parking at McCormick Place and their existing facilities, that additional parking was not required for this building for their operations.
Spaces are there at the three fifty building?
You know?
I can put that number.
Yeah, I don't know if you have it, Jeff. I mean, off the top of my head, I think it's around probably two to three hundred spots, but I'm I'm maybe a little bit off. If you want to, we can get you the exact number.
Correct. I I'll I'll look for the number while we continue.
But I think on a typical day, it's been pre-COVID, maybe half full. So, you know, you do have on generally like Jeff mentioned, there's maybe fifty to seventy-five at most at three fifty Cermak. It's a much bigger building. They're housed every day, but then you've got customers or or support services coming in and out that are supporting either replacing equipment, repairing equipment, et cetera, replacing servers, things like that, that maybe add another twenty-five or so to fifty people. But not on a sort of a day-to-day basis, but in general.
So, okay, so I'm going to move on to a second question now. From time to time, I get complaints from my constituents about noise generated by the other data building. Dust or some black soot that comes off of that building, not being made aware of the maintenance schedule. So perhaps if you're going to do, you know, some sort of testing that you alert the neighbors that that's going to happen, and there'll be noise for the next hour or something. Can you talk about how this will be different? What you can do to mitigate the noise problem that I do occasionally get on the existing data center? And maybe Emily, if you can talk about what the city is doing to evaluate that component of this project?
Sure, I can start off. Yeah, so I'm reviewing the proposal in coordination with our Department of Public Health. And we're asking the applicant to perform perform some noise modeling, air air quality assessments, just to kind of get a better understanding of the impacts of this type of use in this area.
Can you also have them look at the do the same amount of work, whatever they're doing for this new building? I want to have it done for the existing data center, too.
Alderman, one of the differences, obviously, when three fifty Cermak became a data center, a lot of the residential didn't exist to the north. And so that building was not purpose-built, and there are generators that are ground-mounted on the north side of the building. There's equipment on the roof. This building is being purpose-built and designed day one with the intention of all of the noise studies that are taking that we're doing now to all the mitigation that will be that will take place as part of the day-one construction. So we'll have sound attenuation, the generators located at the south end of the building, so that noise that they do generate projects to the south and not to the north. We are working with DPD, as Emily mentioned, and we have we are doing all of the sound studies and the CFD modeling, we would call it. So we are taking all of them.
I'm saying is that as you're going forward with this new project, the extent to which you can mitigate any issues with the existing building, that it should be a package deal, that we should be able to expect you to make whatever is not any kind of soundproofing or mitigation strategies that you can put in place for the old building as well. And I'll just leave that right there. I ask you to think about it, but this will be something that I will be pursuing before we move forward on anything related to this project. Emily, just to be clear, and then I'm going to the questions. This is the old PD expired?
Yeah, they're doing an amendment for this planned development. The subarea had a reverter clause on that if it wasn't constructed within a certain time period. It would it would sunset. Also, it's kind of a change of character from what was originally approved under this planned development for the subarea. The building's different. And then also just to add in, since it is in the Lakefront Protection or District, it would require a trip to plan commission for that also.
Okay, well, since it requires a trip to plant commission, I definitely want the noise mitigation issues related to the old building addressed as part of the approval for the new building. Leave it at that. Let's go to the questions. The Digital Realty Center located in Printer's Row has received significant complaints in regards to noise and appears to rather pay fines than address the issue. What is being done for this location to ensure the noise does not disturb the residents of this neighborhood?
As mentioned earlier, we are doing all of the noise modeling. We have air acoustics is the consultant, and during the master planning, we had them prepare acoustical studies, and those will be shared with Department of Planning and Development as we as we move forward.
Okay, so Emily, my expectation is that you all will come back and discuss what these studies are showing and what mitigation strategies are having the developer do. Second question, how will this project be staged, and what impact will that have to the already limited residential parking?
Well, it will be staged on-site, but at this point, it's it's early in the process. I can't speak to how the contractors would actually stage the work.
Understand that. To the next question, has a survey been conducted to determine resident opinion on this commercial property? That's the beginning of why we're having this meeting, and if you or others have any questions regarding this or some suggestions or concerns, you can always email our office, and we'll get those questions addressed. I will say that in this particular case, this development will probably have to come back for another meeting, at least on the noise mitigation strategies. The next question, does this require a new source permit for the backup generators emissions?
Yes, it will.
Brian, can you unmute Jeff Ayersman? So I can get the context of what that question?
Of course, hold on one moment. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, yeah, I think I think you kind of touched on it is you know, we're we're kind of rewarding digital reality for the data center operation when they've not been a great customer and a great neighbor with regard to the noise and emissions and roof issues for the other facility on top of the problems that they've had at Printer's Row, which have been pretty from what what I've seen personally, it's been pretty unbearable. I know for a lot of residents have shared videos and things like that. So I think, you know, I I hope that some plan is 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 incorporated to understand that. And then I think the second question I had was, the original PD was actually mid nineteen ninety.
No, no, we're not going there yet, Jeff. I asked you to give me context on the permit for the generator emissions. I don't know what that is, and if I'm going to follow this project, I need to have more
Absolutely.
understanding.
Okay, thanks.
What is it?
As far as the generators, you mean?
Yes, the permit. What's, why does this, I don't understand what the permit?
Oh, the for the new source permit?
What's a new source?
So that's the emission. So anytime you do a new facility, industrial facility, depending on your emissions, you have to do an EPA new source per they call it new source permit for any emissions. And so that's what I'm asking is, because I think the previous, the original facility was kind of exempt from that. But when you start adding the size of generators and scope that they're talking about, that's some significant emissions. So it'd be nice to get a handle on that and how that's going to get modeled.
Okay, so this is not a city permit. It's an EPA permit.
It would be an EPA state permit, yes.
Okay, thank you. The other question is, but this is for Emily. The original PD around this project promised commercial space along Calumet?
I know retail and eating and drinking establishments were approved for the subarea. It just obviously wasn't built.
The the PD in two thousand and fourteen did not include, it was not planned to have commercial space. The nature of these facilities is a very high security, and so it was intended for data data center use only.
Okay. The question was the timeline for this project. When do you how are you, when do you want to go to plant commission?
Well, I'm hoping Ben was going to answer that question. I I think digital would say as soon as possible, but obviously, we have to work through the process process with DPD and with you, Alderman. But I I would suspect we're looking at the September Plan Commission date.
Yeah, we don't need to go much further with the questions, because the rest of the questions relate to increased noise pollution. Noise pollution at Printer's Row and constant complaints. Well, I guess I could, how are you currently addressing the noise pollution at your Printer's Row location?
So we are working closely there with Alderman Sophia King. We've done various sound studies. We have installed a perimeter wall, a perimeter sound acoustic wall for that addresses the noise to one area of the residence, and that's been a significant improvement. We have worked closely with the constituents in that area, meeting with town hall meetings, et cetera, to address address those concerns. There's another side where we have residential that has been a source of some recent complaints. We've addressed one side. The other side, we're doing the same thing, designing a sound attenuation wall that would mute or reduce the noise level from the rooftop equipment there. So trying our best there to be good corporate citizens there and reducing that that noise level. Obviously, Jeff mentioned that this would be a different circumstance, because it would be a purpose-built data center with residential there already, so we can account for that in in terms of where we place the equipment. How we, you know, how we, you know, accommodate that and how do we how we account for that noise via sound attenuation equipment that we can install day one with the Printer's Row building. That was a building that wasn't originally data center, kind of developed over the nineties into the such. So there's limitations on what can be done there, but we're trying our best incorporating what's technically and economically feasible to reduce that.
All right, to the other constituent who asked about increased traffic, I'm hearing that this is not a development that brings a lot of traffic to that location. Is that accurate? Right, it's a data center. How do you plan on fueling this data center? Okay, how do you plan on fueling this data center and the cooling structure?
If I completely understand the question, fueling as in diesel fuel or what are they, do we?
I I don't know. That's what she has here. How do you plan on fueling this data center and the cooling structure? I think she's looking for some answer regarding sustainability.
So Jeff, I think she, maybe we, I mean, so the data center is powered by utility feeds, electrical. It's on the electrical grid for powers sourced by ComEd. From a sustainability perspective, we are one of the largest green energy users and sourcers in in the country. In Illinois, our data centers are powered, at least forty percent of the power that's generated from them are all via a green energy source directly out of the state. We have, we funded a wind farm in Will County, and then there's another one that the county slips my mind right now. But it does add about thirty-five megawatts of power onto the electrical grid. That's about thirty-five thousand, I'm sorry, twenty thousand homes or so. And our goal here with this project would be to expand our green energy sources from that perspective. The building is going to be LEED certified. I don't know what designation. Maybe Jeff, you can speak to what we're shooting for here in terms of LEED certification.
Yeah, I don't, Rafal, at this point, I don't know if it's lead silver or lead gold. We'd have to work with DPD on our on our the requirements under the plan development. But it will be LEED certified?
Thank you. I guess one of the few more questions to go. And this might be a planning department question, which is building data centers in more rural, rural areas. Studies show that data centers around the world have decreased quality of life for nearby residents and many cities have implemented zones where data centers aren't allowed to be built as a result of these studies. Emily, you want to comment on that? I'm not aware of these studies.
I'm not either, but if your constituency can send me some of those articles, I'd appreciate it though.
Thank you. So Diana, if you're still here, I'm going to put Emily's email in answer to you and you can send her those studies. Chest Lops has a community garden on its rooftop. That's the building that's just north of your north-facing wall. Are you working with them to ensure the community garden that they have on their roof continues to thrive, knowing there will be decreased sunlight as a result of your structure?
No, but we can reach out and, and have those conversations.
Okay. No street parking rules will be changed at this point. I can't stay, state that at this, today. Where will the delivery areas be? I think you pointed that out in your.
I did. It's, it's on the south side of the building between the ABC building and our ground floor structure. And primarily that'll be used most heavily by the hotel as they're using it currently. That they will see much more traffic on a daily basis than the data center will.
All right, and I think the last question is, there's actually two more. Are you working with blacks and green to consult on this project?
Alderman, I don't know who blacks and green are.
I'll connect you with Sandra Bivins.
Okay.
Will trees be part of the Parkway streetscape plan to keep in line with the rest of the neighborhood?
Yes, they will.
Okay. So I think we've come to the end of this presentation. On the first presentation, we'll be following up with the Department of Transportation and OEMC to come out and talk about the larger traffic issues, not just for that particular development we heard about tonight, but for the surrounding area of 13th Roosevelt, Michigan, Prairie, Wabash. On the second project, if you have any other comments or concerns, please reach out to me at ward03@cityofchicago.org. And Mr. Quarles, I'm sorry you're, it didn't work out for you, but I want to thank him and Mr. Miller and Mr. Rack or, and Mr. Hensley for their presentation this evening. On this one, we still have a road to travel. I am most concerned about noise mitigation and the extent to which a $500 million project is going to have minority participation. And I want to hear about that in your jobs program. In addition to coming back to discuss the noise mitigation for both buildings.
That sounds good. On the, on the jobs front, we have made quite a bit of headway with some, some firms locally to really create a program that through the revolutionary workshop that, that supports and ensures that we meet the requirements, not only meet the requirements, but provide some true career opportunities here. And something that teaches, you know, folks skills and, and gets them into unions here. So that's something that we're proactively working on and want to make sure that that meets the requirements that we had talked about and exceeds them.
Okay, I definitely think you should expect to have a second bite at the apple with the community on this project. I wish everyone a good weekend and happy Father's Day to all the fathers and grandfathers out there. If I don't see you at another meeting soon, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.